To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Canty, if you'll read the governor's proclamation and then we'll have the swearing in ceremony with Mr. Golden, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This meeting in Plymouth Select Board is being conducted in a hybrid format pursuant to modifications made to the open meeting law by the legislature of the Commonwealth in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Members of the public that wish to participate in this meeting may do so by joining us here at Town Hall, may do so by joining us over the Zoom webinar that is posted on the website, or they may observe the meeting by watching on Comcast Channel 9 or Verizon Channel 47. Members of the public that wish to participate may participate in public comment as long as they make their presence known at the relevant time. And with that, I turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Canty. Town Clerk, Kelly, would you like to swear in Mr. Golden?
Aye, David Golden. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will faithfully and impartially. That I will faithfully and impartially. Uphold the duties and responsibility. Uphold the duties and responsibility. As a select board member. As a select board member. For the town of Plymouth. For the town of Plymouth. According to our bylaws. According to our bylaws. And charter. And charter. The laws of the Commonwealth. The laws of the Commonwealth. And the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the United States. So help me God. Congratulations. Thank you.
Dave, would you like to say anything at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm absolutely humbled by the support that I received throughout the campaign. I'm excited to be a part of this board. I think we're going to get some great work done, and I look forward to working with you all. And I want to say a special thanks to my wife, Kelly, my daughter, Emma. Couldn't have been here without them.
Okay, I guess we'll reorganize. Do we have any motions or candidates for chairman?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Canty.
I would make a motion to nominate Richard Quintle to be chair of the Plymouth Select Board. Second?
Discussion? And Mr. Mahoney's joining us by remote, so. Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Bletzer?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
And myself, yes. And I just want to say a quick word. Thank you, all of yous. We're going to work as a team, and we're going to work for Team Plymouth. And I'm excited because we all bring something different to this board, and that's what's going to make it unique. And we're going to also reach out to other boards, as we've all been committed, because we have a lot of issues going on with zoning, and so we need to start tackling that, whether it's through a land bank or whatever, all different things we've been hearing. So we'll put that on. I'm going to ask the town manager to please bring forward the goals from the past and bring them up so Dave can look at them, and he can add to them. And we'll all do the same. So we'll get that for the next meeting, then you can write down what you're interested in getting accomplished and go from there, no problem. Do we have a motion for vice chairman?
I have a motion. I'd like to nominate Kevin Canty to remain as vice chairman. Kevin was a great asset last year as vice chairman, and I thought he did a fantastic job, and I want to keep, I'd like to keep him in that capacity.
Second?
Discussion? Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Bletzer?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
And myself, yes. That's also unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. At this time, would you read for our executive session, please?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, the Select Board will hold an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts' General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Clause 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, this executive session would be in relation to collective bargaining. So at this time, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that we enter into executive session for the stated reason. Second?
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Golden, and we'll do the vote. Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Bletzer?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The board will be returning at approximately 6:00 PM. Thank you. Welcome back to the Select Board meeting of May 21st, 2024. I do apologize sincerely for being a little on the late side. Things upstairs, the negotiations, just went on a little longer than planned. That being said, we're going to go to the Plymouth Police Department, swearing in ceremony. Chief Flynn?
Good evening. Very exciting night for the newest officers here at the town of Plymouth and their families. I'd like to introduce Officer Matthew Carroll. Officer Carroll is a Plymouth resident. He's a graduate of the Notre Dame High School in Lawrenceville, New Jersey, and attended Mercer County Community College. He was formerly an arborist. Officer Chloe Humphries, she's also a Plymouth resident. She's a graduate of Whitman Hansen Regional High School and Assumption University. She was an HR intern with the Plymouth County Sheriff's Department. And finally, Stephen Taylor. Stephen also is a Plymouth resident. He graduated from Brookhaven, New York High School and the University of New Hampshire. He was formerly the dock master for Safe Harbor Marine in Plymouth. All these officers graduated from the Randolph Police Academy on May 10th. Right now, they are going through the in-house training, which includes all our policy procedures, general orders, and getting to learn all the different divisions within the department. So without further ado, Clerk McElworth.
Congratulations. If you could raise your right hand.
Sorry. At the end of the swearing, we'll be calling in their family members to pin them.
Raise your right hands. I state your name. Do solemnly swear. That I will bear true faith. In allegiance to. And will uphold. And defend. The Constitution of the United States of America. And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And that I will fairly. And equitably. Execute the laws thereof. Within the extent. Of my authority and jurisdiction. So help me God. I state your name. Do solemnly swear. That I will faithfully and impartially. Discharge and perform. All the duties incumbent upon me. As a police officer. For the town of Plymouth Police Department. And I will obey. And be bound. By such rules and regulations. Has now are. Or may be. From time to time. Established for the government. Of the town of Plymouth Police Department. So help me God. Last one. I state your name. Hereby accept. The position of police officer. In and for. The town of Plymouth Police Department of the town of Plymouth. Congratulations.
You could have their family members come up and pin their loved ones, their new officers. And that concludes my portion. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Chief. Moving on to licenses and administrative notes. wishes of the board?
Yep. I'd like to separate one license. I have some questions.
Okay. Which one, Charlie?
Is it Mayflower?
Yes. Yes, the One Day Wine and Malt of Mayflower Brewing Company. At the Hedge Museum. Hedge House.
If no members of the board have questions on any of the other licenses, I would make a motion that we adopt the other licenses as a group, and then we come back to Mayflower, if that's acceptable.
Sure, absolutely.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Bletzer?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Now, we're going to go back to Mayflower Brewing Company. Mr. Bletzer?
Drew, how you doing? I have a question for you, and I actually was hoping somebody from Hedge Museum was here too, so I could ask them. But I see you got your every weekend, June, July, August, and September. You run a beer garden down there. And my question is, is it a fundraiser for Hedge House? So where does the, how much do you collect there, and how much goes to the fund, to the fundraiser, to the Hedge House?
We have an agreement with the Hedge House that we give them 15% of the revenue.
15%? What does that come out to? I don't.
It's really hard to know. It bounces all over the place every day. It's very dependent on weather and all kinds of things. We did this a couple of years ago, and we were able to raise, I can't remember the exact number off the top of my head, but several thousand, you know, several thousand dollars.
The reason why I'm asking this, in what your one-day license is, what, $50 for a one-day permit?
I think that's right.
So you give 28 permits, so it comes out to 1,400.
Right.
1,400 for the permits. I'm just, the reason why I've had some calls on it, is we have about 45 liquor establishments within walking distance of Hedge House, and those are the busy months, a lot of people around, and you come down for the best hours, the best months. And I understand when you first started off doing it, I really didn't have a problem. But now there seems to be beer gardens everywhere. At Redbrook or Pine Hills, those are private, you know, they're private villages, and I can see it, and they don't have a problem, the residents or the, down there. But I just, I get concerned, you know. To me, I would feel better if, we have seven breweries now in Plymouth, if everybody got a couple of weekends to do this. I think it would be great, good advertising for the breweries. It would be good for the Hedge House, they'd be making money too. So I just, you know, I, I'm not crazy about seeing this every weekend like that. I just, I just want to let you know. But I know you're the first brewery in Plymouth, and you've helped with our tourism, you know, people love your beer, and I, you know, I know as a formerly working restaurants, we always recommended Mayflower because it was, what's the local beer? It was Mayflower, it was always Mayflower.
Thanks.
So that, so.
May I share some thoughts about that?
Yep, yep.
So I, we appreciate your view on all of that. And one of the things we've done since we started was, we never really established anything in downtown Plymouth. We're out in the industrial park.
Right.
Because we didn't want to compete with our customers, who are the bars and restaurants that support us in town.
Which you are right now doing that, but.
And so now that we're, we have the beer garden there, we did this a couple of years ago when we did it with Hedge House before, we put out cards where people can scan the card and immediately get access to half a dozen or so local restaurants' menus, order food from them while they're at the beer garden, get the food delivered to them.
I didn't know that.
From them. So we're trying to support.
I get it, okay, good.
The other folks there. Because we understand what you're saying.
That's all, I just had concerns. I get, I got some calls on it from some businesses in the area.
Yep.
And I'm sure they're watching tonight, and that's good to know that you're doing this. So, anyway, don't take this the wrong way, Drew.
Not at all.
You've done a great job for Plymouth, so.
You need to look out for everybody. I appreciate that.
Yeah, no, right, I do. So I don't want, I don't want to thank you, getting special treatment. But you were also the first one to do this too, and it was a great idea. And I see, what you do down Pine Hills, I know they love it down there. As a matter of fact, I talked to one of the restaurants right there, and they love it. They said you bring a ton of business in for their restaurant.
Right.
So they're all for it. So anyway, okay, thank you. You answered.
You're welcome.
I feel a lot better. Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
Any other questions from any other members of the board at this time? If there are no other questions, I would solicit a motion for the approval of the Mayflower Brewing Company licenses as listed.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Bletzer has moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Golden has seconded. Any discussion as to the motion? Hearing and seeing none, I will call for the vote. Mr. Bletzer, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you. Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Quintle?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, the gavel is yours again.
Thank you. Moving on to administrative notes. One, two, three, four, five.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no questions from any members of the board, I would make a motion that we approve the five administrative notes as a group. Second?
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Golden. Discussion? Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Bletzer?
I vote yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Moving on to the Agriculture Commission appointments. We have one one-year term, one two-year term, one three-year term, and we have two applicants. Is Mr. Morrison here? How you doing? Would you like to come up and?
Walter Morrison, Nine Bloody Pond Road, former owner of Morrison's Homing Garden, and before that, Agway of Plymouth, and before that, also Agway of Sandwich. I've been involved in agriculture since I got out of UMass back in, if I have to confess, 1972. It was a degree in agricultural economics at that time. I've been involved in agriculture my entire life. In addition to the education, the last 19 years, I've served as a trustee for Federal Furnace Cranberry in Carver, so that's out of the Plymouth area. But, so I'm familiar with the cranberry industry. I'm already on the Conservation Commission. I have filed for another, hopefully a full three-year term with that commission on that board. But this, I'd like to apply for the two-year position, if that is available.
Okay, that was going to be my question. Which term were you interested in?
I anticipated that guess.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions you'd have of me?
Any from the board? Mr. Bletzer?
Mr. Morrison, I thought you were supposed to be retired.
I failed.
You're busier now.
But now I have no conflicts. And so before, I could never be involved, and now I have no financial conflict.
You get great credentials, you went to a great school, my cousin went there, and you're an asset, and thank you for your volunteerism.
Yeah, thanks.
I appreciate it. We're lucky to have you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is Sarah Trainer in? No one on Zoom, right? Okay. Well, Mr. Morrison's here. We've answered, he's answered the questions. He's looking forward to the two-year term, so unless anybody objects or has any concerns, I wish another board.
I'll make the motion.
For the two-year term?
Yes.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Bletzer, second by Mr. Golden. Discussion? Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Bletzer?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
And myself, yes. And thank you very much for helping out the town, Mr. Morrison. So what is the board's wish on Ms. Trainer? We have a one-year term, and we have a three-year term.
I'd like to say something.
Okay, please.
This is the second, second time, I don't know who this woman is, but second time she's, her name's been on the application and hasn't shown up at the meeting, so I can't vote. I say we just leave the positions open and re-advertise, yeah? Because I can't support somebody that can't show up twice, so.
Any comments from anyone else? John? No?
Yeah, she can come into a future meeting, I'm willing to appoint her if she can make a future meeting.
Okay, so that's the wish of the board?
I say we re-advertise.
Okay. Plymouth Area Chamber of Commerce, public art display. Ms. Naples?
Hello, how are you?
And Mr. Nolett, how are you? Welcome.
Good. Amy Naples, Executive Director for the Plymouth Area Chamber of Commerce.
And I'm Bob Nolett, Director of Operations for the Plymouth Area Chamber of Commerce. Thanks for having us here this evening.
So we are here for two reasons. First of them being, we are seeking approval for a third public art installation. As you know, we have done two other very successful installations throughout Plymouth. The first one being was our lobster crawl, which actually we launched in 2016, just a small typo. And then our scallop shell, which we launched in 2018 in anticipation of the Plymouth 400th Celebration, which is actually here on display. I believe it's a beautiful centerpiece for tonight's meeting. And then in 2025, if approved. So we are coming before you, of course, for the third time. So we would propose that we would feature approximately 30 of the unique structures sprinkled throughout town. They measure about five feet and tall, very similar to what you see here. They are sponsored by local businesses, and then they are painted and designed by local artists. The art is put on display, acts as a wayfinding, so we're very strategic when placing them around town so that we can encourage people to go on the trail and check them all out. We know the economic impact has been very great from the success of the past two projects. And, sorry, do you mind going to the next slide? Oh, oh, it's me. Thank you. Awesome. So that's the project overview, and I know you've received the presentation prior to the meeting, so I'm not going to go into great detail. But of course, this is something free, and something free is great to attract tourists, visitors, and just families. We did during the previous installations receive hundreds of phone calls from all over the state. We would get them from senior centers, from high schools for field trips, so it was a great activity, something free for not only kiddos, but for seniors and families as well. So this is just a little idea of kind of the different artwork that were featured around town. We found the lobsters to be kind of fun and unique, and the reason why we did them is because lobsters are such an important part of our community and has such rich heritage. They had really good personalities, and families really enjoyed them. And then the scallop shell we selected because the scallop shell is a sign of welcome, so we knew we were going to anticipate a number of visitors for the 400th celebration.
So up here, we have a proposed listing of the locations. These have been proposed or in the past have been approved. We haven't used all of them, but these ones are on town property, doesn't include any shell, any art that will be on private property. And, you know, they can be scattered anywhere through North Plymouth, Cedarville. We really want to spread them out throughout the entire community, but these would be the town locations that we'd be seeking approval for. So Amy kind of touched upon it a little bit. Basically, the way it works is local businesses, community organizations, nonprofits, and individuals can sponsor the art installation. We then partner them and pair them up with local artists from our community that will then come up with a design that works for both the artist and the sponsor. The design is then reviewed in front of a committee, just to make sure, you know, it's acceptable for, you know, the public and to be out, you know, for everyone to enjoy. And then they pick a location. So it's really first come, first served, and how we do it, who signs up first can pick their location, and that's how we typically do that.
So the question we anticipated from you all would be the maintenance and liability of projects like this. So we will manage the maintenance, and we will be held responsible for all the upkeep, including graffiti, repairs, touch-ups wherever needed. There were many times that we did have to have an artist come in and touch up. The artwork is glazed, I guess you could say painted clear by an auto, so it's just like a car. So as you can see, this. Clear coat, thank you. Clear coat. And as you can see, that one is still shining so beautifully. But of course, we anticipate sometimes graffiti and other things that may happen to it, and we will take care of that. That also includes the installation of, of course, the artwork, as well as the concrete base that it sits on. So we work with a company, and they give us the required weight and everything of the concrete base, and it's quite heavy, so it can't just be taken away easily or tipped over or pushed over. So of course, the liability, the Chamber of Commerce holds all risk and liability. We put, of course, the town on as additionally insured and all of that. Anyone else stand for that? Let's see what else.
So this is our proposed timeline pending, we receive approval tonight. We're going to kick it off with the sales and promotion of it. Does take a little bit of time to reach out to the businesses, you know, explain the process, get the artists lined up, and we hope to be ordering the art in the fall. And then if everything goes well, our big reveal would be spring of 2025, right before we kick off the season. So it gives us a good timeline to get everything lined up for the artists to work on, painting them and whatnot, getting them done over the winter. And then, you know, all 29 have to be clear-coated, so that takes some time as well, and they get a couple coats of that. So we have to, it's a lot of moving and transporting over quite a few months, and we're the movers and transporters, so.
Yeah, we're the maintenance team.
We like to give ourselves some time. So, you know, timelines are subject to change, but that's our goal, is to get it out for spring of 2025.
Yes. And I'm sure you're wondering what? So after a lot of consideration and reviewing some ideas that people had, we have come up with a harbor seal. This is open to consideration, of course, from the Select Board, but the reasoning behind this was because the lobsters were such a huge hit, they had such a great personality. People absolutely loved them, not just children, but the entire community. So we thought going back to a concept like that would be appropriate. So we thought going back to a concept like that would be appropriate. We are a unique chamber. We kind of coined ourselves as not being your average chamber. And we didn't want to do something that another community may have done before. The harbor seal, the company that we work with, there's no other harbor seals.
No. Sharks and whales and everything have been done on the Cape. So we wanted to kind of stay away from that. And this is more unique, and so this is what, you know, we're hoping to get approval on.
Yes, and just a couple of other things I wanted to add. And the size and scale of this product, there's no one else that does this. It really sets Plymouth apart, which is why we receive so many visitors. We create maps and have them at the visitor center. And I will tell you that we had to keep ordering, and I know Steve Lyon is here, because we had gone to the VSB multiple times asking for assistance with the maps. We couldn't keep them in stock. People loved them. And I know in this day and age, you think, oh, you want that on your phone. But not our seniors, not families. And again, they act as wayfinding. So it was great for that. As I mentioned, we get calls from schools, groups, business outings.
Company outings.
Company outings. There was a lot of those that took place in that. And everything about this is local. That's something that is very important to us, obviously, as a chamber and supporting local businesses. We use local companies, local concrete, local contractors, local maintenance crew, and of course, local artists. And we do pay the local artists. And of course, this is a free event, puts lots of smiles on people's faces. So that is, yes. Charlie, I'm ready for some questions.
I know, that's why I'm gonna throw some at you. What is the cost of, what's the cost of the artwork and the installation if somebody wanted? Like, in other words, if a businessman wanted to get one for his business, what, how much would he?
So we're pricing that out.
Okay.
Previously, at our, for our other installations, it was $5,000 to own the artwork. So they, a lot of businesses you'll see, I'm trying to think, Cape Otter Body, you'll see, there's a lobster outside of theirs. They own that. And then we had an option where you could lease it. So, and then we put it up for auction later. And that was $3,500. But as we know, we have had inflation since then. So we're not sure of all of the costs.
Right, so once you get the price, you're gonna try and advertise and try and get some people to buy these?
Exactly. We'll have local businesses sponsor them.
Now, how is it gonna work? So they'll sponsor and put them on public property? Some of our public spots?
Some on public and some on private.
But people are able to buy it for their business too and put it in their?
Yes. Exactly. And then there's a plaque, actually, we have a plaque here that is the name of the seal, per se, the artist's name, and then the business it's sponsored by on each one of them.
And they can be anywhere. You know, we have shells down at Red Brook. We have.
At the Center for Active Living. So not just in the downtown.
No, I saw that, yeah. And I love the seal. I mean, obviously, we have seals everywhere.
Yeah.
So it's a great, it's a great idea.
Thanks, Charlie.
We have a lot of generous people in Plymouth, a lot of generous businesses.
We certainly do.
So how many are you anticipating you can get out there?
So ironically, so Bob kept saying 29, and that is because we had 29 for both. It was just very ironic. It's not like we were like.
We tried to tell.
We tried for 30, but we're much short. Because we had to set a little deadline for ourselves as well.
Good, well, good luck.
Yeah, so we're hoping for 30 this time. Maybe it'll be 29, who knows?
Well, it's a fun, it's certainly a fun project. And it's good for tourism, again, a number one industry. So anyway, I'm in favor.
Thanks, Charlie.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, folks, for being here tonight. The removal piece that you talk about in fall 2028, that's just from the public property, correct? Because there are still lobsters around town hanging out.
Exactly.
Okay. Is the intention that you'll come back with another proposal in a few years?
If we have it in us. It is a lot, because as a nonprofit, certainly, this kind of falls on us and recruitment of family, my dad, things like that. We usually have to get some hands on deck. So, yeah, I mean, who knows? We, it's been a while since we did the shell, so we were ready for another.
Well, I have a five-year-old, and she absolutely adores these, so.
I know her well.
I'm very much looking forward to seeing her. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments from the board? I just have to say, I'm a little sad in that you didn't do a little dance and a song here. I see you was on Facebook.
Oh, really?
I was really, you know.
Would you like me to? No, I'm just kidding.
Well, next time, yeah. The wish of the board?
Make a motion that we approve the public art display proposal.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Blitzer. Discussion. Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
I vote yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Good luck and thank you.
Thank you. So I have one more item. Sorry to hold this all up. But as I have mentioned multiple times, we do have a shell here. So I want to read the letter. I believe it was sent to you. On behalf of the Plymouth Area Chamber of Commerce, we are honored to present the town of Plymouth with the beloved Season Greetings Scallop Shell. We hope this beautiful piece will find a home in Town Hall where it can be enjoyed by generations to come. This priceless piece of art was created to celebrate Plymouth's 400th anniversary and was part of the scallop roll, a unique public art display featuring 28 other shells throughout Plymouth. It was positioned in the heart of our stunning waterfront. The shell welcomed residents, visitors, families, and even four-legged friends, becoming an iconic photo spot. The artist Keith Favazzi, sorry, masterfully captured the essence of Plymouth, highlighting many of our town's historic and significant landmarks. We're proud to gift the shell to the select board this evening, knowing it was admired by hundreds of thousands of visitors. As you may know, Plymouth Area Chamber is celebrating its 75th year this year. So we want to give back to the town that has supported and embraced our organization for many years. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'd make a motion that we accept the gift of the scholarship.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Blitzer. Discussion. Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you on behalf of the town.
And anticipation, we did create a little plaque as well for you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we're gonna go to the mobile food vending policy. Kate McKay, Town Council.
Good evening. There's a mobile food vending operations policy that is in your packet. It is a revision of an old policy. If you've had a chance to review it, it's a bit more extensive than the old policy. It starts out by, if I'll just tell you a little bit about it, it starts out by defending what a mobile food vendor is. It goes through the licensing requirements. Within the town, it addresses the prohibited areas where they cannot operate. It lays out a fairly comprehensive list of requirements that a mobile food vendor has to comply with through the various departments in town. For example, the Fire Department, the Board of Health, Inspeccional Services. And it imposes obligations on them, on a mobile food vendor, in terms of where they set up, how they set up, what other rules and regulations they would be subject to. And it specifically indicates that if they want to set up on school property, they're gonna have to go to the school to get that. It lays out a section for what happens if there's a violation of the policy, allowing for suspension, and then a hearing regarding that permit if that person exercises that, right, or if the licensing authority does. And at the very end, it exempts mobile food vendors who are contracted to serve on private property for a private event from this policy. It's got a few more details, but that's the general outline of what this policy accomplishes.
Thank you, Kate. Questions or comments from the board? Mr. Canty?
Thank you, Ms. McKay. In regards to if it's, maybe a little pedantic, but at the risk of being pedantic. If the schools authorized it to be on school property and they, whoever the vendor was, violated the conditions set by the schools, does that trigger penalties under our policy? Or would they have their own separate policy that has violations and penalties like ours does?
I think the intent of the policy is that if the mobile food vendor wants to operate in the town, they have to comply with this policy.
Sure.
The permission to use the school's location or property has to come from the school, but still, the local licensing authority or the licensing authority would be enforcing these rules, not a separate set of rules from the school.
Okay, so they have to, if they want to go to the schools, basically, they have to get permission for the location from them and still comply with the criteria for us?
Yes. Section 5 on the policy talks about the authority to grant permission.
Right.
To be on the school property. But everything else remains with this policy and the licensing authority.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Golden, then Mr. Blitzer.
My first question is, Kevin, what does pedantic mean?
Pedantic, overly bookish?
Anyway, Kate, and Anne, you were part of this. So what made you do this, with just time, do, they just antiquated? Is there a reason for this, or?
Yeah, so part of it was antiquated. And then with the new park being built at Stevens Field, I worked with Karen and Kate on it to help develop a little bit more revenue for the town, too. We've also had some issues in the past with ice cream trucks and vendors coming into places like Morton Park, fighting over being there. So this establishes a policy and a vendor to be in there without having to constantly fight with different companies coming in.
Well, I'm glad you're doing it. And as these folks, Karen, when they come down to the Board of Health and they get a food permit, you know, they gotta be clear what a food permit is. It's not a permit to sell on the street. You know, I had a situation years ago. I had a guy at the hot dog cart was setting up outside East Bay Grill at 9:00 at night. The place is, it's mobbed down there and all the restaurants are open. I went out, I said, what are you doing? I mean, you should see him where he was set up. And he said to me, I have a food permit, I'm licensed. I said, that's a food permit, that you can sell food, but not on the public streets. It's not a vendor's license. And he was very confused about it. So I had to diplomatically ask him to leave, so. But anyway, it's a long time coming. I don't know why, we don't have any vending on public streets unless it's okay by the town, as far as I know, right? Because I.
Correct.
In other words, you.
There are exclusive rights that are offered, like, as you know, through July 4.
For the parades. But the July 4th incorp has the rights.
Correct.
And we get, the town gives them the rights for that. I get that. But I just don't want somebody to misunderstand that they see all these streets, you can't go on. That doesn't mean you can drive down to Taylor Ave.
No, actually, if you have a mobile food permit in the town of Plymouth, you can obviously sell ice cream, you know, throughout the neighborhood. But it's a transient mobile food permit, meaning you cannot stay there any longer than your line.
Okay.
So once your five kids have bought their ice creams, you can't sit there and ring your bell. You need to move.
So they're clear about that, so they can't just sit there.
Yep, that's part of it, yep.
The reason why I'm saying it, because there's a couple of stores in that area that possibly could be opening up, and they may have a problem, stuff like that. So I've always been protective of, I guess, the restaurants and that, I don't want food trucks opening up in front of them. But it's pretty clear, most of the main streets, you know, it's pretty clear they can't do it on that, but.
Right, and this does offer the opportunity, however, for someone to bid on the exclusive right to be at some of our parks and our beaches. So they would have the exclusive right to be the vendor at those locations.
And quite frankly, in the beaches, and I think it's a service to the places like Morton Park.
Absolutely.
There's nothing out there.
Absolutely, and Anne mentioned it, too. But by actually naming the exclusive right for the particular vendor, it eliminates a lot of the trouble that some of our young people who work at those locations had in the past few summers, when certain mobile food trucks would come in together and they would say, you have to leave because I'm here. And then they would get into a little.
You don't own the territory.
Right, exactly.
Unless you have.
Right.
And also, by doing this, it's very clear what they have to have for permits.
Very clear.
And I'm sure you inspect them and everything else, which is good.
Yes.
But, you know, there is a need for the food trucks in certain areas. So, and what hours, are there certain hours they can't, they can sell till?
I think we said till dusk, when, at the parks.
Okay. That's about all I had. Yep, that's about all I had, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Wish of the board?
I'd make, if there are no further questions, I would make a motion that we approve the mobile food vending policy as presented.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Blitzer. Discussion. Mr. Mahoney?
Should Mr. Chairman, do we have to rescind the old?
Yes.
The old, okay. Do we need to do that first?
I will amend my motion to also rescind the existing policy.
Thank you, Mr. Canty, and I'll second that.
Thank you.
Discussion. See you then, Mr. Mahoney.
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. Mike Cahill? Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Select Board. My name is Michael Cahill. I'm the Climate Resiliency and Sustainability Planner for the town of Plymouth. I'm here on behalf of, with the Climate Action and Net Zero Committee, here to request that you vote to approve the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. This plan was put into place, or was, this is the emphasis for its development, was when the board declared a climate emergency in July of 2021. And over the last year or so, the members of the Climate Action Net Zero Committee and my predecessor, Mark Greel, have begun working on this plan. Over the last five months, I've served as the staff liaison towards the development of this plan. And it's my honor to step aside and welcome Mr. Dale Bryan, the Chair of the Climate Action at Zero Committee, to the microphone.
Good evening. As the current Chair of CANS, it is my privilege to open this conversation with you. Let me start, though, by asking the CANS-appointed members and the dedicated volunteers to please stand and be seen, if not recognized by name, for those of you that have been working on this. Thank you very much. Part included, thank you so much. On behalf of them, and with support from various community nonprofits, business and public health organizations, a wide array of involved residents and various town personnel, tonight we present to you the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan and seek your approval by a confirming vote of acceptance. Like elected officials everywhere, you may be predisposed to consider this plan with the question, what will it cost the town? For now, I encourage you to let go of that concern, or at least suspend it these few minutes so you can consider the following framing. The successful implementation of this roadmap will not only save the town financially over time, since it will open access to state and federal funding sources, as well as reduce damages and costs as climate impacts occur. But most importantly, this plan will save lives. Climate change is a public health matter. Successful adaptation will enhance the quality of life of all Plymouthans, and it will lay a resilient foundation for generations to come. Think of it this way. The children born in Plymouth this year will be 76 when 2100 arrives. And our accountability is also to them. For it is probable their entire lives will be, excuse me, for it is probable their entire lives will occur amidst increasing heating and related extreme climate impacts. Whether we or the nation achieve net zero by 2050 or not, decarbonizing our way of life is necessary but insufficient. We must adapt and prepare for climate-related risks and impacts. A climate emergency requires no less. Moreover, a more resilient Plymouth will enhance our community as a destination for visitors across New England, the nation, the world. A special place and region with a unique history, carrying out a demonstrated commitment to a more sustainable future, will have even greater appeal. In other words, it is a lifetime of collective well-being and community vitality that we should aspire to, and by which we measure our necessary and long-term efforts. That, in essence, is what the Climate Action Adaptation Plan is about and intends to address, which leads to my second and final point. We present to you a community plan. The 60 or so of us that have collaborated to develop it, along with professional consultation, need many dozens more to help implement it in the years ahead. It can only be effective with involvement of numerous town residents, employees, officials, businesses, and organizations of every sort. We are asking you that you not only approve the plan tonight, but that you become actively involved to make real its potential. That request is of everyone in this room, everyone viewing online and on PAC TV, everyone in Plymouth, to put it directly. The CANS committee alone, even in concert with town staff, is insufficient to advance the many tasks identified in the plan. That is also true for the challenges that are certain to emerge as new burdens from climate change unfold. Community resilience is community engagement. As noted in the plan, a whole-of-government approach is integral and intentional. Moreover, a whole of community commitment to climate action and adaptation is also foundational to this undertaking. Community well-being is Plymouth's priority, and that is a mutual and shared obligation. And with that, I'll return it back to my table.
Thank you, Dale. So to echo the words of Mr. Bryan, this plan was, the development of this plan, we utilized a community and collaborative governance approach. Through the plan, we had three advisory group meetings in which we developed our priority actions with members of the community. Throughout the advisory group meetings, 46 members of community, of the town government, community leaders, and direct stakeholders were involved in the process. And as Dale mentioned, climate change is a multifaceted, complex problem, and to that we utilized a whole-of-government approach for a solution. Now Plymouth is not unique in this endeavor. There are 20 other South Shore communities that have already adapted climate, have already approved climate action plans, including Kingston, Braintree, Duxbury, Halifax, Cohasset, and Hingham. It's also pivotal to note that 295 green communities have been designated within the state of Massachusetts, all of which have energy reduction plans. Now, since the Green Communities Declaration began in 2010, the state has allocated $177 million in funding towards those communities. Plymouth was late to adopt the Green Communities Program, only becoming a Green Communities in 2023. To that point, we have missed out on a significant amount of funding. To date, we have only received $270,000, which equates to 0.15% of the total state funding allocated during that period. By approving this plan tonight, you will be ensuring that we're on track for future state funding and that we will not be missing out on any more funding. In April of 2023, the Town of Plymouth contracted Kim Lundgren Associates, KLA, to develop this plan. They were developed for their extraordinary track record as they have created climate action plans for 43 municipalities and cities across the country. To create and inform our policy decisions moving forward, it was pivotal that we understood the baseline conditions here in town. We did this through a greenhouse gas emissions analysis. From this analysis, we were able to show that 46% of all town emissions is coming from the transportation sector, while 47% of emissions is coming from the energy sector. It was clear this is where we need to attend our focus to. Now, climate change offers or poses a severe threat to our community, although I think it's often undersold the opportunities that are available to Plymouth by addressing climate change. This gives us a unique opportunity to rebuild our community and our infrastructure in a way that offers public utility to our residents. The Climate Action Plan is intended to serve as a roadmap for the next 10 to 15 years, highlighting the opportunities available to Plymouth and safeguarding the unique features and characteristics that make Plymouth the great home that it is. Throughout the plan, we have identified 62 priority actions falling within five areas of focus: building, energy and infrastructure, natural systems, health, safety and preparedness, transportation, and waste. To highlight the multi-dimensional benefits of this plan, we have selected one action within each focus area to identify. Building Energy and Infrastructure, Action BEI 2.2A. Identify opportunities for microgrids and energy storage for critical facilities. A microgrid is a small-scale electrical network able to provide local generation and control capabilities to meet a local energy demand. Usually, microgrids are run with renewable energy sources, and they're able to provide power to specific buildings or developments. With the extreme weather events associated with climate change becoming more and more extreme, having the ability to offer localized microgrids for critical infrastructure that is decentralized, meaning is not reliant on a central energy source or transportation network, we will be able to ensure that our community is more resilient, providing critical public services to community members in the case of emergency situations. We're beginning to identify the feasibility of microgrids at critical infrastructure points to ensure that operations, maintenance, and shelter capabilities remain in place in the case of critical power outages. Natural Systems, Action NS 2.2B. Publicly promote maritime businesses that use sustainable harvesting and ecosystem management practices, including shellfish, oysters, kelp farming industries. Working with the Plymouth Foundation, the Town of Plymouth has begun to promote blue economy development in town. Blue economy can be commonly known as maritime industry or any enterprises that encapsulate ocean environments. Currently, the South Shore has a robust blue economy, offering jobs to 23,000 residents in Massachusetts and generating $731 million in annual wages. What's unique about this industry is that they provide environmental co-benefits or spillovers, which can be used to ameliorate environmental problems in town. Through the development and promotion of public-private partnerships with these high-growth, environmentally beneficial industries, we can create jobs for, high-paying jobs for residents, improve the economic vitality in town, and improve environmental conditions. Health, Safety and Preparedness, Action ASP 2.1D. Develop a shoreline protection plan to address coastal shoreline protection. One of Plymouth's undeniable strengths is our accessibility to and availability of coastal resources. In Plymouth, we have 37 miles of coastline, which will offer unique recreational and economic opportunities for residents. Although coastlines offer significant value to our residents, they also pose significant risk associated with climate change and sea level rise and enhanced coastal storm surges. The Massachusetts Coastal Office, or Office of Coastal Zone Management, anticipates that if adaptation actions are not taken on the Massachusetts shoreline, by 2070, we will have up to $1 billion in damages associated with sea level rise and coastal storm surges. This action will help prepare to preserve the strength of Plymouth in terms of coastline and identify areas that need immediate intervention while ensuring that we can receive state and federal funding to do so. Transportation, Action T 2.2A. Improve access and safety for pedestrians and bicycles through enhanced streetscape features with a focus on high-traffic areas. Traditionally, in urban policy, transportation, in transportation policy, pedestrian access is often overlooked or inadequately recognized. Through this action, we are attempting to offer a reduce, a reduction in transportation emissions while offering alternative means of transportation in high-traffic areas. This project is directly aligned with the Downtown Resiliency Project, which seeks to redesign 3,000 millimeter feet in the downtown heart of Plymouth, running from San Vicet Street to the Main Street Extension Parking Lot. Although this project will carry a multitude of environmental benefits, it's important to note that by improving pedestrian access in the downtown area and improving ADA accessibility, we can expect to see enhanced interactions between local business owners and consumers. And finally, Waste, Action W 1.1C. Partner with the Chamber of Commerce and Green Restaurant Association to pilot a green restaurant destination program. As we all know, the culinary industry is a highly volatile market, and a simple leg up can provide a huge impact to a business strategy. By reducing waste and increasing efficiency for businesses, we can expect to see a decrease in operating costs and an increase in profit margins. Moreover, a study that was conducted by the Wharton Business School in 2023 found that when faced with the option between purchasing a sustainable good and a brand-named product, 71% of millennials and 75% of Gen Z individuals will choose the sustainable product. This is compounded by the fact, by 2023, 48% of the United States workforce will be made up of millennials and Gen Zs. Therefore, by understanding trends in consumer preferences, companies can use a competitive advantage to set themselves apart from other firms. This action seeks to make a list of sustainable actions that local restaurants can adhere to, and from there, they will be promoted and receive benefits from the town. In conclusion, your packets tonight had letters of support from various community groups that were involved in the development of this plan. We pulled out some quotes and we've put them here for you all to see. The best policies are built on strong scientific and economic data, and through this plan, we have not only looked at the environmental risks and opportunities, but we have also highlighted the economic and social ones. If you vote to approve this plan tonight, you will be ensuring that we have state and federal funding opportunities available to us, decreasing the burden on taxpayers for infrastructure investments. You'll be increasing the opportunities for, the economic and social opportunities for residents, and you'll also be safeguarding the unique characteristics and features that make Plymouth so unique. Thank you, and we hope you vote to approve this plan.
Any questions from the Board or comments from Mr. Cahill? Mr. Canty?
Thank you, Mr. Cahill, and thank you to everybody that worked on the plan. If there were a particular action item that the board had an issue with, what would be our recourse, as opposed to just a straight-up-and-down vote of yes or no?
So this is an aspirational plan. This is a plan that we will use to inform going, our policies going forward, but every grant, or every funding request will still have to come before the board and receive approval. So by green-lighting this plan, you're not green-lighting everything in the approval, you'll still have control over funding, obviously, going forward.
So if we wanted to change the wording, for example, on a particular action, that's something we could do at this stage, or we would just later on in the process choose to either do or not do a specific request as it comes before us, or both?
So we fully intend this to be a living document that's going to be living and growing with us. As we're going through actions, we intend to check things off, and if there's amendments that need to be made for different characteristics and changes that have happened throughout town through that period, we're fully willing to make amendments to the plan as well.
Okay, thank you.
John, did you have a question? No?
No, sorry, Mr. Chairman, no.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Blitzer?
Yeah, Mike, I have a question. You talked about benefits, first of all, funding, we're not guaranteed funding, but what kind of funding do you anticipate? I know we have a lot of erosion and we need seawalls and things like that, and transportation's a huge issue. You know, we want to get alternative, we want, you know, biking and walking pedestrians, and that, that to me means sidewalks, and so is that the kind of funding you're talking about for infrastructure, to do those kinds of things? And the other question is, what benefits will businesses get from the town? What can the town give as benefits for businesses that go green, as you said, like, for instance, restaurants?
So to your first question, there are various state and federal pots of funding available. At this point in time, with the bipartisan infrastructure law that's been recently put out, there's more federal funding towards these projects than ever before. So we fully intend to use the priorities identified in this plan to help advocate for state, federal and state funding going forward. I should also note, like I mentioned, with the Green Communities Program, the second phase of the Green Communities requires you have a climate action plan, although there are other stipulations that will need to hit, this will put us on track to that second pot of funding specifically designated for communities that have climate action plans. For your second question about the Green Communities Declaration, is that correct?
Yeah, the benefits that benefit, you said that the town businesses can get benefits from the town.
Sure. So what we're envisioning is that once, we have a list of actions that you can do, companies are given a score depending on how many actions they check off. Once they do, they're promoted by the town as a green restaurant, and they fall underneath our green restaurant umbrella, which we can use to bring, to draw in people into town and really highlight Plymouth as a green food destination.
The reason why I'm asking this question is going green also could be expensive. So I just wanted, that's how you can sell the businesses, whatever, you know, this is, we're doing this, and in the end, you can save money on it.
Sure.
That's why, that's why I'm asking a question.
Yeah, and the list will have smaller actions as well. There will be bigger actions that will have you, give you more points, and there will be smaller actions that companies can easily check off as, so maybe not serving water when a person initially sits down, using reusable packaging on their goods that they're sending out, or buying fish from local fishers and aquaculturists.
Right. Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Cahill. The chairman mentioned earlier tonight that he would like for us to suspend our question about what the cost it will be for citizens. Your presentation, temporarily, yes, he did say temporarily, your presentation was great, you are an excellent presenter, I will add. There are frankly a lot more elements of this plan than were highlighted here tonight. I think that they warrant further discussion and a deeper dive in front of the community. I have particular concerns about, well, buildings and energy and infrastructure in the transportation section. Is there gonna, will these strategies result in, for example, a higher cost to real estate? You talk about, you know, ensuring that new builds take into account carbon reduction strategies. That, to Mr. Blitzer's point, could be costly for folks who are building those, and therefore costly to those who will then buy them. Under transportation, you know, are we talking about bike lanes in North Plymouth where roads are already pretty narrow? So I want to have a deeper discussion, I think, about these things before adopting this strategy. I'm happy to, I think it should include what the cost to the taxpayer may be, but to the chairman's point as well, what the long-term benefits and cost savings could be for those folks.
If I could respond to that.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah, Mike, I'm sorry, go ahead.
In terms of building improvements, we have met with inspectional services, both the director and all the inspectors. What we would love to do when it comes to building retrofists and set up a pilot program here in Plymouth, so we can fully evaluate the costs to get buildings to the proposed thresholds that are at the state level to meet the specialized stretch code, and also to determine, you know, the total cost that it will take to get there. So we're already starting to think about some of these questions, but to Mr. Chairman, Mr. Bryan's point earlier, there is no cost in approving this plan tonight. The cost will be with the actions going forward.
And I think, I just want to have, I think Mr. Golden's concern is, one of our biggest problems at Plymouth that we hear all the time is affordable housing. So the more expensive it takes to build a house, the more expensive it is to sell a house, and the less affordable it is. That's, that's why there is a concern with that. So I know there's people out there that have plans to build smaller houses and villages that might be more cost-effective, and we have to listen to those people, too, but it's got to be affordable to build, so, but anyway, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Do you want to come up? Sure, come on.
I think I would try to address both Mr. Canty and Mr. Golden this way. One of the working structures that we have intended for this project is to have groups of members of the committee, working groups of residents, working groups of officials and business leaders in each of these areas. And so to the notion of the deep dive, more input into what is going to happen, it's not going to be 10 of us that make that decision. 60 of us already have been involved.
60 of us already have been involved in this, and what we hope to be able to do is have many, many, many more voices at the table as to what our priorities could be, what our choices will be, and that will give, as Mike had said, this will be coming back to you almost in every turn, especially when we're asking for money. The funding streams that are going to be available to us are only open to us with this plan's approval. Now, that may not be true for every funding stream, but I think for the significant ones from the state, that's the next step that we would need to take. So the cost factor, it's coming, but to Charlie's point, prices are going up regardless, housing and the like. So it's not going to be driven by one thing, one area of this plan around housing costs. 61 other items in there are going to require other kinds of contributions from the community with the intent over time to lower the costs of impact that's coming.
Mr. Canty?
So I think this would be directed at Mr. Cahill. So, reading through the plan, I agree with, and I understand it's aspirational language, and we don't have to do any specific actions that are outlined in here, that could be assessed, it's a living document. I do think one particular action, as currently worded, is potentially inflammatory to some. So I'd like to go over how, what it currently is written as, and a proposal to rewrite it, and get your feedback on whether if we were to make a motion to approve the plan with my rewrite of that particular language, what your thoughts would be on that. So specifically, I am referring to Action NS 1.2A, which currently reads, "Develop and Implement a Tree Protection Bylaw Applying to Public and Private Land That Maintains Tree Cover and Values the Resilience Benefits of Trees." So I think for some folks, a bylaw limiting the ability to remove trees on private land may be, let's say, unpalatable. But if we were to reword it in a more broad way to, "Develop and Implement Tree Protection Strategies and/or Incentives to Help Encourage the Maintenance of Tree Cover and the Various Resilience Benefits of Trees on Public and Private Land," that may be easier to swallow. Do you have an opinion on whether we were to change that, if it would impact the overall objectives or not?
So a little bit of background, this one was developed by a bylaw that was put forth in the town of Grafton. The blanking on the year currently, but the way that they did it is they weren't limiting the development of a property or the cutting of trees on the property after it was already been developed, but their goal was to limit in the beginning when the property was actually being constructed for a home in the first place. So if it was within a certain area of town, there had to be 15% tree cover at this property. They weren't specifically limiting the homeowner once they had come in. So a little bit of background on that one, that's kind of where we're coming from. Could you reread the bylaws or the proposed change, sorry?
Sure. So my proposed change would be to rewrite it to, "Develop and Implement Tree Protection Strategies and/or Incentives to Help Encourage the Maintenance of Tree Cover and the Various Resilience Benefits of Trees on Public and Private Land." Because my concern is that some people will read it as currently written and think that you're trying to take away their rights to do what they want on the property that they own, and that that, you're going to lose some people that way. And I think the way we're wording this, a future board could still pass a bylaw like what you're suggesting, but it doesn't, it doesn't direct that in that way, and it is more broad, and we could look at ways to actually encourage people to just do the right thing without feeling like they're being forced to do it.
Sure, and I think that's appropriate. With a policy background, I strongly believe that a carrot is much more, better motivator than a stick.
And more palatable.
Correct, and anytime that we can offer incentives, I think that's probably the most appropriate way to do so.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Cahill, are other communities' action plans this detailed?
Yes.
To Mr. Canty's point?
Yes, they are. And KLA has made, like I said, 43 other action plans across the country. Quite a few of those are in, have taken place in the state. I know the numbers in front of me, but I know off the top of my head, New Bedford and Salem have both used KLA for their plans.
Yeah, I just think, you said that this is an aspirational plan, and if it is truly aspirational, I think to Mr. Canty's point, broader terms makes better sense.
Any other comments from the board, questions? See you now, I'll bring it back to the board. Mr. Canty?
I would make a motion that we approve the plan as presented, however, with one exception being that we amend Action NS 1.2A to read, "Develop and Implement Tree Protection Strategies and/or Incentives to Help Encourage the Maintenance of Tree Cover and the Various Resilience Benefits of Trees on Public and Private Land," instead of what it reads in the document that we were provided.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Golden, discussion, Mr. Canty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I think that, I've read through all the action plans, and I think that are the proposals. I think that several of them are broadly written enough to be aspirational in the way that Mr. Golden was alluding to, and I think could be, are also broad enough that they can develop as climate change impacts are being felt, we have some idea of how that's going to look for us, but we don't know all of how that's going to play out. We don't know if some of the partial mitigation that we're doing, that the state's doing, federal even larger, will have an impact on that. But I think it's, a lot of them are workable. I just think this particular one, as particularly written, would rile some people in the wrong way, and I think you want, part of this is, you know, there's a lot of people in the community, I know many of them, that are very concerned about climate change. I'm concerned about climate change, but it can't just be us that are working towards this. It has to be, you need buy-in from people that are in the middle, you need buy-in from at least some of the people that think that there's some enormous hoax to make money off solar panels or whatever those people think. But you need to be able to move those people onto the side of working with us, or at least not working against us, to address these issues. So that's why, just that particular phrasing that was used, I just think should be massaged a little bit so that it goes down a little easier. So that's my proposal on that, but I think that the other language is written in a way that I think is sufficiently palatable to folks.
So you gave it your okay, you gave it the nod?
I intend to vote yes on the slightly amended plan, yes.
No, I mean, you've gone through the articles, and we're not forcing anything on any residents or...
Right, none of this, none of these, none of these proposals are mandatory or binding. So we could choose to pass this plan tonight and do nothing with it for the rest of human existence. Hopefully, we will do those things, but, but none of it is, none of it is required, so...
Okay, that's really the question.
Yes, right.
And then you agree with that, right?
Correct.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? You made the motion?
I did.
You did, you get seconded, Mr. Golden?
Mr. Golden seconded.
I'm getting it now, okay. Mr. Mahoney?
Yes?
Mr. Golden?
No.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for all the work that you've all done.
Department of Public Works Road Program 2024, Mr. Coyle and Mr. Downey's here.
Thank you, good evening, Bill Coyle, DPW Director. Good evening, Bill Coyle, DPW Director, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Golden, congratulations, and thank you for having us here this evening to present that 2024 roadway program. I thought it's also probably appropriate to announce that this week is National Public Works Week, and with that, I'd like to thank all the DPW employees for all their hard work this past year, they've done a wonderful job. And also to mention that Friday is Public Works Day at DPW. That will be, it's at 159 Camelot Drive from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m. So a few things I also wanted to mention was that in going over our roadway program, James and I went through the beta report that was done a few years back, and we used that report as a guide, where they identified certain roads for need of improvement. We went through the report, but then we drove for the past several months, when time would allow, many of these roads that were major collector roads that were in need of maintenance work, but also neighborhood roads that were in somewhat deplorable condition. So we're trying to balance maintaining our infrastructure, our heavily traveled roadways. The philosophy is keep your good roads good, but also, and try not to always do worse first, but there is a balance there, you have to keep your good roads good and your collector roads in good condition, but you have to make sure you're also addressing some of the neighborhood roads that are in very poor condition. So I think the plan that James will, will present this evening to you, I think is a balance of that, and you'll see that we have, now, steel summer, James, is thunder, we have about 30 miles of roadway work that we're proposing this year, 17 miles of chip seal, which is more of a surface treatment, so keeping the good roads good, and about 13 miles of reclamation, which is pulverizing a roadway, regrading, and also, also paving, and with a total investment of over $9 million into our infrastructure. So with that, I'll turn it over to James, but I also want to announce that James was, I received the notification from Bay State Roads, and I'll probably embarrass him, but he was given the designation of a Master Road Scholar this year, so I will turn it over to our Master Road Scholar. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Chairman, board, everybody. So I'm here, James Downey, Assistant DPW Director, and I'm here to talk about the 2024 Road Program. The town of Plymouth had hired the Beta Group back in 2011 to inspect and create our pavement management program. Since 2011, we have updated this report several times, with the most recent update done last year 2023. This road program covers about 378 miles of road, of which are made up by accepted, unaccepted, paved roads, and gravel. We have 230 miles of accepted paved roads and 74 miles of unaccepted paved roads, for a total of 304 miles of paved roads. We also have gravel roads, 14 miles of accepted and 60 miles of unaccepted, for 74 miles of total gravel roads. There are other roads in Plymouth that do not fall under this program or town jurisdiction. They are considered excluded. Some of those roads include those owned by the state and private roads, some examples being Warren Avenue, State Road, known as Route 3A and Route 3, and then other roads which are private, or like Shops at 5 and the roads find in the Pine Hills and Redbrook. Upon completion of the most recent update, the overall RSR, which stands for the Road Surface Rating for Plymouth Roadway Network, was 68. That rating of 68 was comprised of the end, year-end analysis, which include looking at the total of 304 paved miles of road, and when giving them a grade, the RSR, they were then categorized into several different repair methods. Some roads that were in poor condition fell under major rehabilitation, some fell under minor rehabilitation, and others fell either in preventative or routine maintenance. Once those roads were put into those categories, we also had developed some average unit cost to calculate total backlog of work if we were to redo all the roads in Plymouth. If you looked at the total 304 miles of road and did an appropriate treatment on each, it would cost us over $133 million. This graph here, it may be familiar to some, it appears in the beta report, and it shows the existing condition analysis with a five-year forecast. So right now, the road network rates at 68, and with, and with a certain amount of investment every year, that rating could either go up or down. So on average, if the town was to invest $5.5 million a year, we would probably stay relatively steady at 60, 68, 69. If you put a little bit more money, say $7 million a year, you would gradually go up over time. If you put $8.5 million over the course of five years, we probably would go from a 68 just to over a 72, which I would say probably 72, 75 is a pretty reasonable and good place to be in time.
So you've got an asphalt road. Every year, that road gets a little further from new. Left untreated, that pavement will only last 10 to 15 years. Some cities and counties wait until the road is in need of major repairs before they remove and replace the pavement. That type of fix gets really costly, especially considering all the roads in a network, each getting closer and closer to failure and closer to expensive intervention. This drains the budget and puts the whole network on the path to deterioration. But some agencies are getting 40 years of life or more from their asphalt roads. By preserving pavement with cost-effective surface treatments, communities are keeping their good roads in good shape for much longer. That saves the budget and the network in the long run, and there's less downtime for major construction, which keeps residents happy. Still, some roads are past the point of preservation. What to do with deteriorated roads? Why not recycle the pavement you've already paid for? Asphalt recycling treatments build roads with equal strength at a fraction of the cost, helping agencies save resources big time. Plus, both preservation and recycling cut down on greenhouse gas emissions and material waste. By proactively managing our road network, instead of just fixing one failing road at a time, road managers can put their community back on the road to success. Learn how to stretch your resources further at roadresource.org.
So that was a video I put into the slideshow, it's a little hard to hear, so it may not have had the full effect. You may recognize it from last year, it was also in the presentation last year, and it pretty much gives a good summary of what we look to do in evaluating our roads, classifying them into different categories, and then appropriately do some in each of the categories in order to spend the money wisely. So just for comparison, last year, we had about 15.5 miles of road that we completed. We were able to pave 5.6 miles, and we did 9.9 miles of rubber chip seal. For this year, we were looking to do a little bit more. So as Bill had mentioned, we're shooting for just over 30 miles of road this year. And that'll include both paving of full depth and mill and overlay for about 13.1 miles, and then also some rubber chip seal of about 17.3 miles. This is just a bar graph showing the same thing, over the last three years, so 2022, we had completed just over 7.3 miles total. Then last year, we about doubled that to 15.5, and then this year, we're looking to double that as well and accomplish 30.4 miles of road. This here, it's it's hard to see, but we do have it on our web, our webpage. We do produce a GIS map that shows the roads that we've done throughout town. We do try to do roads in every district as well as every category. And then this kind of gives you a visualization of of those roads. So we have several different maps. This one here shows the roads that we've recently completed and will do this year. And then we also have other maps that show the condition of the existing pavement. But as far as this year's program, the total anticipated funding is just over $9 million. So we anticipate $9,153,101. Out of that money, we have about 87% going towards accepted roads. So we have $7,959,491 for accepted roads and $1,193,610 for unaccepted roads. If you break down that spending into the different categories, we have about 24% going towards rubber chip seal, 42% going to paving, and then we have 22% going towards sidewalk drainage and crack seal. And then we set aside about 13% for contingency. The primary funding sources for our program come from Town Meeting, which at this year's Town Meeting, it was approved for $3 million towards road preservation. We still have some funding left over from FY22, which is allocated towards accepted and unaccepted. And we also have an old article for gravel roads that we've used some, and we will look to use the rest this year, along with our Chapter 90 funding, which this year, we're looking at getting $1,591,041. And we have a carryover of Chapter 90 of $2,749,440. So now I list the streets that we are going to do under the program. There's quite a lot of streets, and we will post this online. I'll read some of them. So for our rubber chip seal, we're looking to do Black Cat Road, Brandeis Lane, Clifford Road, Compton Court, Daniel Circle, Dorothy Road, Garrett Place, Gunner Exchange Road, Kirk Circle, Lady Slipper Drive, Lawrence Road, Little Pine Lane, Little Sandy Pond Road, Long Pond Road, Lund's Way, North Triangle Drive, Old Schoolhouse Road, Raymond Road, Ship Pond Road, Stow Lane, Triphammer Circle, Upland Road, Wareham Road, and Watercourse Road. These would all fall under the rubber chip seal program. For hot mix asphalt paving, we have Allerton Street, Bartlett Road, Beach Road, Beaver Dam Road, Boot Pond Road, Brook Road, Carver Road, Church Street, Clark Road, Cordage Terrace Extension, Crackstone Road, Eaton Way, Eisenhower Way, Hedges Pond Road, Hilldale Road, Hoover Street, Kennedy Parkway, Long Pond Road, Manamit Point Road, Mustard Field, Nicks Rock Road, In Squanto Road, Priest Road, Priscilla Beach Road, Robbins Hill Road, Sammaset Street, Seaver Place, Seaver Street, Smolin Lane, South Cherry Street, Timothy Lane, Truman Ave, and White Horse Road. Here I provide an example of Boot Pond Road from a prior year. That was the existing condition, followed by the after photo. Nooks Rock Road, the before, the after. And then I have another little video here. I don't know if the volume will be heard, but the photos should speak for themselves. And this video is for the asphalt paving. There's an asphalt plant located in Plymouth, and they are our current contractor this year as well as several past years. And this just shows them operating from their plant to a local job, which we'll be showing next. So this work here is on Court Street out front of Town Hall. It is sped up a little bit. And that ends the presentation. We are here for questions.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Some comments.
Mr. Blitzer.
I think it's we're doubling from last year from 15 to 30 miles. That's awesome. You know, that's what we talked about. It was one of our goals. It's why we put money away. You know, we're fixing buildings. I see that being done. We're accomplishing that. Now we're fixing roads. I mean, that's substantial going from 15 to 30. And being on the Roads Advisory Committee, I've learned so much. I knew nothing about this. But it's hard to get 30 miles. It's hard to get 15. We don't have the paving companies to do it. You explained that to us last last year. And it's not, not even even if you had the money, you know. So I hope everybody that's watching realizes that to do 30 miles is big. It's 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 a lot of work. And I'd like to comment about the, you know, the money part of it, that that chip seal. I have that on my street, and it was amazing. I watched them do it. And I guess we get 10 years, but it's great, and it's 15% of the cost for paving. So we're going to be able to do a lot more of that too with the money. You're spending, what, $9 million this year? And so it's great. I get a question on the 68 rating. I should know this. But what what is satisfactory? What what are we trying to achieve? What do you think we can achieve? Let's let's put it that way first, you know, because it's like, I always relate everything to restaurants. You don't, you know, you want to have a, you know, 20% liquor cost. But what are you selling the drinks for? What what can you possibly, you know, if your mix is at 24, it's hard to get a 20. What do you think we can achieve for for a rating?
I would think we we could be somewhere between 70 and 75.
So we're going to, we're going to get close to that this year if we hit our 30 miles. If we do what you're talking about, we're going to be around.
We will make some progress towards it. I think if I go back to that slide, I think, I think it would take maybe five years to get to the 75. But I think we should, after this year, see our our score go up by at least a point.
Now, the score, that's another question. Is the higher the rating, do we get better funding, or do we, does that make a difference? Is that it's, it's just tells us what the shape of our roads are in?
Yeah, yeah, it's just the condition of the road. So it's like your grade in school. So it goes from 1 to 100. And, yeah, but it doesn't.
So we're never, we're never going to be 100, but if we get to 75, we're being in pretty good shape.
Right, yes, yep, yep.
Well, it's something to look forward to. I'm I'm very impressed from last year to this year, if especially if we accomplish it. So hopefully next year, we can get up again. We can do 40 miles next year. So anyway, great job. Great job by the DPW. I saw what you did on Water Street, finishing that up, cleaning that up. And I know you're going to come back in the in the in the fall, or the spring, excuse me, and you're going to, you're going to buff that up and repave it so it looks nice and scraped and everything else. But anyway, great job.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mahoney, and then Mr. Canty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll keep it brief. The biggest liability we have is the maintenance, modernization, new construction of all the infrastructure that we have in a community this size. And, you know, it wasn't until 2017 that basically, as an act of desperation from the former DPW director, came in front of the board looking for money to proactively invest in our roads. And I think it's been a, the funding mechanisms put in place and the board supported by the Finance Director. We were told seven years ago that we had an exposure of $135 million. And people might say, well, we haven't moved the needle on that. And I would disagree because we've made significant improvements to dozens of miles of roads in the last seven years. And that number, if we hadn't done that, that would be significantly larger than it is. So I just wanted to compliment everyone involved, and I agree with Charlie. We're going from 15 to 30. That's great news, and, you know, we're just going to keep it going. Thank you.
So thank you, Mr. Downey and Mr. Coyle. And, you know, this was a goal of the board. As Charlie alluded to, last year, we were lucky enough to receive Town Meeting support for the funding mechanism, which is a big help. I know when there was talk of the budget and the town's operations, a lot of people, for whatever reason, equate everything to potholes on their street. So maybe this will help assuade some of those individuals' concerns. If nothing else, at least we'll be repairing more roads than we did last year. I I know that we've talked in the past about what that capacity, if we had the money to do it in a year, would be. So hopefully next year, now that we're doubling the amount that we're putting in, maybe we could have more of a conversation of like, if we have a gauge of, if we had all the money in the world, which we're never going to have, like, what is the actual capacity? So that we can get to that, if we're not already at that capacity this year, maybe we could get to that capacity. So we're repairing road, as many roads every year as we can, because obviously with 378 miles of roads, even doing 30 a year is only a portion of those. So, but I I think this is a tremendous step. I'm glad that the board's directives and goals were were met. I'm glad for the work that you folks did, obviously, of all the work that's going to be done over the last few, over the next year. And I think it'll, residents will see this benefit throughout the community. So thank you.
Thank you.
Wish of the board?
I would make a motion that we approve the 2024 Road Program as presented. Well, second?
Motion by Mr. Canty, excuse me, second by Mr. Golden. Discussion? Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
And myself, yes, unanimous.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Downey, Mr. Coyle. Anyone wishing to speak on the public comment? Town managers report?
Okay, so lots to report regarding the summer seasons upon us and Memorial Day is just in front of us this weekend. Let me start by saying, just as a reminder, that the Memorial Day Parade will begin at Memorial Hall this coming Monday morning. Folks will gather around 9:00 a.m. and then step off the parade route by 9:30 and end the parade route at the Training Green. So inviting all folks to attend. I think the weather's going to hold down. It should be a great day. Before I get on to some of the summer items, just as an official announcement, although it's covered by the local newspaper, Water Street is officially open. The street's been put back together. Striping will be complete, I think, this week. And the new sewer main is flowing. So we'll continue to monitor that through the summer months as we try to wrap up this project. As far as the election goes, just some data to report. So we met the town clerk this morning, and what we learned was that there were about 7,000 votes that were casted on this election. 4,000 of the 7,000 votes were casted either early voting or vote by mail. And I know we've had some conversations with the town clerk and some members of this board about compiling data to determine whether or not it starts to make sense to consolidate polling locations. So that's something we hope to work with the board over the next six-plus months. We will continue to gather data. We have another election that'll take place in September. Then again, the presidential election will take place in November. But given that more than 50% of the folks that are voting are voting not on Election Day, this may be an opportunity to look at our current operations and consolidate some of those polling locations. So looking forward to those conversations in the future. So as far as everything that's happening this coming weekend, I can report. Mr. Gould is here this evening. He reported to us this morning that the piping plovers have returned to White Horse Beach. I mean, as you know, they've been populating Long Beach for some time. It was new last year that the plovers populated White Horse Beach. So his team will continue to monitor them. But we are expecting that there will be some closures at White Horse Beach. Again, that was new to the residents in that area. So we'll continue to report to the community those closures sometime in probably mid to late June time period. But as far as beaches that are open, so Long Beach, Plymouth Beach, and Morton Park will be open and staffed this weekend. It'll be beginning on Saturday, Sunday, and then on Monday, Memorial Day. And then we'll go to full staffing for a lot of our beaches and parks come Saturday, June 22. But I just want folks to be aware that staffing is only going to take place at Plymouth Beach and Morton Park this coming weekend. We will be starting parking enforcement at White Horse Beach. So White Horse Beach will be open, assuming the weather permits, but it will not be staffed. But we will have a parking enforcement team at White Horse Beach starting this weekend. And we want folks to be aware that about 18 months ago, there's been a change in how we issue beach stickers. And so for that first year, we issued beach stickers for 18 months because we were still on the cycle of fiscal year issuance. Now we're on a calendar year, effective January 1, 2024. So those folks that had an orange sticker for their about 18 months, throw those away because you are required to have a blue beach sticker starting January 1, and that blue beach sticker will end December 31 of this year. So again, just to remind, throw away your orange sticker because parking enforcement will be out there and will be looking for blue stickers. And speaking of White Horse Beach, the T R A restroom is now officially open. DPW put that together last week as well. So we are prepared for hopefully a great weather holiday weekend with all of our staffing and everything else that's been put together. And the last thing I just mentioned to you is that on June 1, Graduation Day, so we will not have a meeting next week, so I want to make that announcement now. On June 1, the, both the Plymouth North and Plymouth South High School graduations will take place. So pending any questions, that's all I have for this evening.
Questions for the town manager, Mr. Blitzer? Questions for the town manager, Mr. Blitzer?
Actually, David, can I ask you a question about the plovers? Because I'm, I'm going to get calls, I know, so.
That's why I brought it up.
Yeah, thank you, Derek, for that.
Good evening.
Good evening, David. So, we got the plovers in the same area as last year?
Yes, approximately the same area.
Are we going to handle it the same way, just have a little area cordoned off?
Yeah, so there's symbolic fencing out and signage out there now. The restrictions that we experienced last year were really twofold, mainly to do with where we couldn't put barrels and where DPW couldn't drive with a truck to empty those barrels, so there might be some limitations on trash barrels.
Right.
And because there are no other broods on that beach, those chicks moved up and down the beach freely. So, as you recall, they went pretty far south, I'm sorry, north, and they went past the boat ramp at the full sail. And so, there were some limitations on driving boat shells through that boat ramp while the chicks were moving through that area, so.
So, they're heading down to Priscilla Beach?
I'm sorry?
They're heading down to Priscilla Beach?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm just kidding. So, you can't, you can't drive on the beach, the trucks can't get down there. You're going to be able to put extra barrels out by the full sail, like you did, you did that last year?
Yeah, so we can just move them up further where the trucks can get to, where the chicks won't be going, correct?
And what about the other areas, public areas, you can't put barrels out there?
So, south of the Brook is not an issue.
No, north of the Brook Avenue, Abington Ave, Thomas Ave.
Up until.
Williams.
Up until the anticipated hatch date, and then we'll see how far those chicks move, and then if we have to move barrels out of those areas.
Okay.
Because we're not going to be able to drive in to empty them, then we'll have to plan accordingly.
Okay, because they'll be asking that, so.
Yep. We'll be working with DPW that, that whole time, just like we did last year, and let them know.
And you posted down there too, I believe, didn't you?
Correct.
Posted something good, so that's great. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions, Derek? See you in none. Anyone have anything on the new business? Mr. Canty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, one of the priorities that I had through this year, and I've already spoken to the chair about this, is having the select board have a comprehensive legislative agenda that we take responsibility for from the beginning of the process all the way to the end, from goal setting to formulating an idea, to drafting what that idea is actually going to be like, whether that's an article, whether that's some specific policy or something like that, whether that, and then through the FinCom presentation, the presentation to other boards and committees in town, going to caucuses, getting, answering people's questions there, and then obviously, a town meeting itself, shepherding it from, all the way from beginning to very, very end. That is something that I think we did to a limited extent this year with some of the articles, like the budget. I was able to personally go to, I think, nine out of the eighteen caucuses, which I think helped. But if each of us could pitch in, that would make, many hands make light work, right? So, getting more of us to go to those caucuses, I think, would be better to get, to be able to answer people's questions and advance our particular agendas and priorities would, I think, be beneficial. So, I'm, I'm really looking to hopefully get buy-in from the rest of the board in regards to the assistance in going to those caucuses, as well as buy-in into vetting these policies so that when we put something out, it's ready for primetime and ready to succeed at town meeting. I think one of the ways we can do that is by divorcing ourselves from the traditional town meeting process. So, if we have an idea for a bylaw or an article, we can start working on it when we have that idea and work on it over time. And when it's ready, it can go on to the next available warrant, as opposed to just starting with an idea. Sometimes I've seen ideas start when a warrant opens, and sometimes that deadline comes and we put something on there that's harder to pass than if we had just waited until it was ready to put it on there. I think that doing it this way will improve our work product itself, as well as our work process, and it'll help move Plymouth forward. I would suggest, if it's amenable to the chair and the town manager who set the agenda, that a good place to start with this would be looking at the nuisance bylaw from last fall, which I think after town meeting was viewed as, by some people, as being close to something that could pass, but wasn't quite there for the people that were voting on it at the day. I think we could, over the course of the summer, for example, work on the nuisance bylaw and put it into, in a position where we could get something passed, because obviously, we're still getting complaints about things like births and the other unsightly properties throughout town. But I don't think it, I don't think that particular one failed for that reason. I think it failed for some other reasons that were kind of secondary concern. So, maybe if we focused on the primary and then went from there in the future. But that's something that's a priority for me, and I look forward to working with the board on that. My hope is that we could maybe put the nuisance bylaw on a, if not the next agenda, then a, one of the agendas in June to start that process.
Mr. Blitzer?
Well, my, my new business is, the gentleman sitting right next to me, Mr. David Golden, I want to congratulate him. He ran a great election, and I know he was, he, he was supposedly unopposed, but he wasn't. There was a campaign that was started to, and there was somebody running against him. But David was a great candidate right from the start. He come out, he come out firing, and he had a great committee behind him. But David, I can just say, is going to be an asset to this board, and I'm very proud of him. And also, Tim Bennett for Planning Board, Tim Bennett ran a great race against Frank Mann. You know, Frank's been around a long time, and Tim's a newcomer, and he did, Tim did very well. And again, he's going to be, he's going to be a great asset to that planning board. All the school committee folks that won, I congratulate them. Stevie Palmer won again for the Housing Authority, so good luck to him. But I commend anybody that puts their name on a sign and runs, has the courage to run because it takes, it takes a lot, takes a lot of courage, so, and I commend everybody that does that. But anyway, David, thank you, and welcome aboard. And thank you, I'm out of that little seat. I'm in the big kid's seat now, so.
Anything else on the new business? Oil business? Motion to adjourn. The next meeting will be June 4th.
I still move to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Second? Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Well, John, you there?
He voted with his feet.
All right, anyway. Four, one missing. Thank you for watching.